Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease, available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
It is 6:00 on Monday, May 5, 2025. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. I know for the record this meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communication during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anybody recording this meeting? Seeing none, I know for the record that participated in tonight's meeting are myself, William Ramsey, Board Member Liz Klein, and new Board Member Julie Straley. For those willing and able, please turn and face the flag of our nation for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we move to our next agenda item, I did want to take a moment to note that recently, a longtime Board Member Bruce Rabufo passed away. I know that Mike was kind enough to recognize Bruce at the beginning of town meeting, but I thought it fitting that our board recognized him as well, as he served six years on this board. Bruce was born in Brooklyn, New York in 1943. He attended the seminary prior to graduating from the Georgetown University Walsh School of Foreign Service in 1964, and later obtained his graduate degree at Pace University in 1982. He married his wife Susan Rabufo at the age of 24 in 1967, and they remained married until Susan's passing on April 2, 2025. Overall, they were married for 57 years. Bruce enjoyed a long career in the telecommunications industry. He held many senior executive positions at the New York Telephone Company, Belcor, and Nine-X. While head of operations for Nine-X Cable Comms in the United Kingdom, where he had a three-year tenure, he oversaw a major project to build a telephone and cable company from scratch. I'd note that after his career and his retirement in 1997 at the age of 53, he became very involved with local government here in Hingham. He's very proud of his community in Hingham. He volunteered as the Vice Chairman of the Parish Council at St. Paul's, was appointed as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. He was also Chairman of the Hingham Development and Industrial Commission, and in that role, oversaw the complete restoration of Hingham Square. He served two years on the Hingham Select Board from 2008 to 2014. I would note that I personally worked with Bruce on many, many things in town. He was a close friend of mine, and I will certainly remember him as a kind and honorable man. So we're thinking of his family tonight. Liz, you want anything?
Yes, thank you, Bill, for presenting that. Certainly, we're thinking of the family. I am grateful to Bruce for all the time he spent with me, countless hours while I was considering joining this Select Board. So in the time that I knew him, it was so obvious, his devotion to his family, his community, he did so much for the Town of Hingham, and his devotion to Georgetown, I think, came out loud and clear. So thinking of them this evening, certainly a difficult time, losing Susan too in such a short time. So we are grateful for their legacy.
Julie, you want anything?
I'd like to offer my condolences to the family.
Thank you. All right, next item on, I also want to note that we do want to welcome our newest Board Member, Julie Straley, who was elected on Saturday. So Julie, welcome. You bring such great experience, you know, in town government, and we're thrilled to have you with us, and we're looking forward to a great year. So welcome, thank you for running, and thank you for serving, and we're really excited to have you on the board.
Yes, congratulations. Thank you for running. I am thrilled to have you on the board and to be able to serve with you, and I think this year, especially, your financial acumen and your experience in AdCom is really going to be a great asset to us, so thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you to the voters of Hingham.
Next item on the agenda is reorganization of the Select Board. Is there any debate on this agenda item? Hearing none, I would take a motion.
I will make a motion to nominate and appoint Bill Ramsey as Chair of the Hingham Select Board.
Second.
Motion been made, and second it, roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Nomin I as well, the motion carries. Thank you both.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thanks a lot. It's a privilege to serve on this board, and it's very much an honor to lead it. So thank you. Thank you both for the confidence. Looking forward to a great year ahead. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve. Are you ready to move forward?
Yes.
All right, with that, I would, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated February 11, 2025.
And I would second that motion. Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Julie?
Abstain.
And I'm in favor, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to...
Do you want to do one more?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated February 25, 2025.
Now I would second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Nomin I as well, Julie?
Abstain.
Great. All right, next item on the agenda is the Battle of Grape Island proclamation. We all have a copy of the proclamation here in front of us. Let's kind of break it down into three parts, and I'll turn it over to Julie.
Thank you. The Town of Hingham Proclamation, Battle of Grape Island Day. Whereas the Train Band, or Hingham Militia, a hardy, disciplined band of citizen soldiers comprised of the able-bodied citizens of the town, first organized when the original settlers appeared on the shores of Bear Cove in 1633, protecting generations of Hingham citizens for over a century. Whereas in 1775, as British naval forces increased in number and provisioned themselves from farms on the Harbor Islands, the Hingham Militia readied itself for an invasion from the sea. Whereas, on the morning of Sunday, May 21, 1775, alarms were sounded when four boats carrying a small British force were seen on Grape Island, loading hay and other provisions from the farm of loyalist Elijah Levitt.
Whereas, the Hingham Militia responded to Wameth Neck, and the militia and the British exchanged fire until the flood tide allowed the Patriots to launch their own boats to Grape Island. Whereas, when the Patriots reached the island, the British soldiers fleeing in their boats from the other side fired on the militia, which returned the fire. Whereas, the Patriots removed the livestock and burned the barn containing the remaining tons of hay, eliminating an important source of provisions for the British.
And whereas, the battle between the Hingham Militia and the British at Grape Island began the Provision War in the Harbor Islands, a turning point in the American Revolutionary War. Now therefore, we, William C. Ramsey, Elizabeth F. Klein, and Julie M. Straley, Select Board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim Sunday, May 18, 2025, and in the years thereafter, the Sunday closest to May 21, the Battle of Grape Island Day. Voted this fifth day of May 2025, signed William C. Ramsey Chair, Elizabeth F. Klein, and Julie M. Straley. And with that, I will take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the issuance... no, sorry, I'm in the wrong place. I make a motion to proclaim Sunday, May 18, 2025, as Battle of Grape Island Day in Hingham.
Second.
Roll call vote, Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm a I as well, the motion carries unanimously. For anybody who's not been to that event, I would encourage you to go. It's a wonderful, wonderful day in Hingham. Usually, it's a nice day, so hopefully the weather will cooperate. But the militia is so enthusiastic, it's a lot of fun to go to it and see the battle reenacted. They even sing a Battle of Grape Island song. It's a lot of fun, so hopefully people can attend the event. It's really, really fun. All right, next item on the agenda is to consider the issuance of a special one-day all-alcohol beverages license to the Hingham Historical Society for Raise a Glass to 250, to be held at the Benjamin Lincoln House on Saturday, May 10, 2025, from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. I think we have Jim Terrell present to discuss this matter. Jim, good evening.
Good evening, I am here.
Welcome. So you want to tell us a little about the event? I mean, I think we've all been there, but just a little overview?
Yeah, sure, this is a similar event to what we had last year in front of the Benjamin Lincoln House with a large tent. The event runs from 5:30 to 8:30. We expect about 220 people to attend, we'll have two police details. The event is in commemoration of really the kickoff for REV 250. As you know, we've had a number of events already, but we decided to take this opportunity while the weather hopefully will be a little nicer and really start kicking off what will be a really eventful and important and fun couple of years, celebrating the semi-quintcentennial for a number of events. So we're really excited for it.
Awesome, thank you, Jim. Let me turn it over to my calls for questions. Liz, do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions. I'm familiar with the setup, and I see the application is complete, and I believe Chief Jones signed off on this already.
He did sign off on it, my understanding. Jim, are you familiar with this, that there will be a detail required?
Yes, we've requested two details already.
Julie, any questions?
No questions, but I'm looking forward to attending.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, we move to a vote, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day all-alcoholic beverages license to Hingham Historical Society for Raise a Glass to 250, spring fundraiser to be held at the Benjamin Lincoln House on Saturday, May 10, 2025, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m.
Your second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm a I as well, the motion carries unanimously. Jim, best of luck with your event. Historical Society always does great things, I'm looking forward to it. Thanks for being here.
Thanks so much, and also congratulations to Julie, and thank you to Joe Fisher for his years of service.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Have a great night, good seeing you.
You too, take care.
Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the application for a change of manager submitted by Burton's Grill of Hingham, 94 Derby Street, Hingham, and the request for a change of operating hours. I believe we have Jill Stanish with us tonight. Jill, come on up to the podium real quick. If you could just identify yourself for the record and tell us a little bit about what you're asking us to do tonight.
Yeah, my name's Jill Stanish, I'm the General Manager at Burton's Grill in Hingham at the Derby Street Plaza. We have recently changed our hours, extending Monday through Thursday, closing at 10 p.m., and Friday and Saturday extending, closing to 11 p.m. Sundays did not change, closing at 9 p.m. So we're looking to extend those hours and then change my name to over to the liquor license, where I'm General Manager.
Great, thank you. Tom, any, the police department have any concerns with this request?
Nope, Cory Form was processed, and she came back with fine call. Well done.
Thank you.
Jill, I'll tell you, my kids love to go have lunch at your restaurant. They love the children's menu there, and they go there all the time, so...
Then we'll see you soon, hopefully.
You guys are great. All right, Liz, do you have any questions?
Thank you for being here. Just about the hours, where is that documented in the application, Tom?
The last page of what they sent ahead.
Oh, just the email, or is it actually part of the application? I don't have that.
I think it's a corporate vote.
Sorry, okay.
Maybe...
Oh, yes, okay. Yep. Okay, so Monday through Thursday to 10:30, Friday, Saturday, 11:30, okay. And obviously, Chief Jones was fine with the hours, okay.
Yes.
Great, we need a little later on the weekends, am I right? And obviously, you're seeing business, people are wanting to be later, yeah. Okay, thank you. No other questions?
Just one second, there might be a discrepancy in the vote language of the times.
No worries.
Oh, it's the same. I think they're right.
Could you just tell us again the hours that you read off earlier?
Yeah, Monday through Thursday, we wanted to extend to 10 p.m., and then Friday and Saturday extend to 11 p.m. Sundays was no change at 9 p.m.
Okay, what we had in the request earlier in the week was to 10:30 and then 11:30.
Oh, I apologize, I didn't know that was in there. 10:30, please, on Saturdays and Sundays. And then we open at 11 a.m. Monday through Fridays.
So just to be clear, what the request was, Monday to Thursday was 11:30 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., Monday to Thursday, not 10.
Oh, we're 10, our hours of operation are 10 p.m., so I'm assuming we do have the 30-minute last call.
Okay.
So I was unaware that was printed on your...
And then Friday, Friday was 11:30, 11:30, Saturday 10:30 to 11:30, and Sunday 10:30 to 9:30.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess we do last call at our closing time.
Okay.
Okay.
For the vote language.
Sorry, no, it's okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you for...
Yeah, no, I didn't...
You have any additional questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
All right, so we got the hours right.
Yep.
All right, any members of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? All right, seeing none, I would take a motion, we're going to break it up into two motions, so we'll vote on one at a time.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the application submitted by Burton's Grill of Hingham, 94 Derby Street, Hingham, for a change of manager from Richard Limberdy to Jillian Stanish in accordance with the application for a change of manager filed with the Town of Hingham on April 10, 2025, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm a I as well, the motion carries unanimously, and I would take a second motion.
I make a motion to approve the change of hours to Monday through Thursday, 11:30 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., Friday, 11:30 a.m. to 11:30 p.m., Saturday, 10:30 a.m. to 11:30 p.m., and Sunday, 10:30 a.m. to 9:30 p.m.
Second.
Roll call vote, Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm a I as well, the motion carries unanimously, best of luck to you in your restaurant.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is to consider the agreement with Liberty Chevrolet Incorporated for five 2025 4x4 Silverado pickup trucks and one 2025 regular cab and chassis with a 4x4 for the Department of Public Works. So we have Ashley with us, and David. So Ashley, do you want to start us off a little bit, and then David can talk the logistics of the contracting. Good to see you, Ashley.
Absolutely. Good to see you too. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So these are just replacements of our older vehicles that we had requested at town meeting, the funding for. So it's five of our regular pickup trucks that have just reached their end of life, and then the sixth vehicle is a one-ton with a stainless steel bed dump truck that we're requesting from them.
Thank you. David, can you add to it a little?
No, nothing specific to add. As Ashley mentioned, this was all just approved at the recent town meeting.
Great. And with DPW trucks tend to be multipurpose, right? They're used for different things. Tell the public a little bit what they're going to be used for and how they're going to benefit services that provided by the DPW.
So these trucks are, one of them is for the transfer station. His truck has been used quite a lot. It's used for plowing and just doing all the basic things, plowing and sanding and cluttering parts and things like that when it comes to maintaining equipment at the transfer station. Then I have, one of them is for my tree and park supervisor, which he is on call 24/7 when it comes to anything, that it comes to a tree coming down with any accidents, things like that. The other vehicle is for my highway supervisor, who is also on call 24/7 when it comes to anything, whether it comes to waterways, closing roads. And then the other vehicle is for my shop supervisor. He is on call 24/7 as well when it comes to, if they are out there working, to be able to come and assist them if they have any issues with any equipment that they have doing their jobs. And then we have two other that will be in the fleet for the guys to just to be going around doing their jobs, whether it is cleaning sidewalks or doing tree cleanup, pothole fixes, every, all the things to keep Hingham beautiful.
Excellent, thank you. It sounds like they'll be put to good use. Julie, do you have any questions?
No question, it's just a comment that I'm glad that you are moving so fast to make the orders for these trucks. The repairs have been, I know, significant over the years, and so I'm glad that the funds appropriated by town meeting are being put to work so quickly. Thank you.
With them being appropriated so fast has made it so much easier for us as well to be able to get the vehicles.
Yep.
So really appreciate you guys being able to get us that funding.
Liz, any questions? Yes, very grateful to the Capital Outlay Committee and the citizens of Hingham for approving this and addressing this critical need. David, can you just speak to the procurement process, just in terms of how you came up with Liberty Chevrolet? Again, appreciate the speed, but can you just walk us through how that happened?
Sure, so Liberty Chevrolet is actually a vendor that we have used in previous years, whether it's with Water Department. And so Ashley had, and Manny had received a few quotes from Liberty Chevy already a while back. We've been kind of queuing this up a little bit, and they are a part of the Plymouth County Commissioners, so that's, and it's good through 2026. So that is pretty much all of the contracts that we have here with this one, specifically for the five 2025 2500s, and then the cabin chassis as well. So they were able to get this together rather quickly. There were a few changes here and there with remote starts and things of that nature to get the quote where it needed to be, but ultimately, we were working on this the last couple of weeks.
Okay, excellent, well, thank you for the diligence on that.
Sure.
And they're in stock, we'll get them quickly, hopefully?
Yeah, I think there was a few, I mean, we did put the end of this year, December 31st of 2025, to give them, we know that there is definitely some lead time with a few of these vehicles, so we did put to the end of this calendar year.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Ashley, did you want to add something?
I was just saying, three of them are already in stock, and once this gets agreed on, then they can retrofit them, and we can get them decalced so that we could have them within 60 days.
Okay, great.
And, you know, great job, Ashley, by you, David, excellent job by you as well, and thank you to the voters at town meeting for approving this much-needed item. So with that, is there any members, are there any members of the public who'd like to ask any questions or make any comments on this agenda item? All right, seeing none, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Liberty Chevrolet Incorporated for five 2025 4x4 Silverado pickup trucks and one 2025 regular cab and chassis with 4x4 for the Department of Public Works in an amount not to exceed $478,413.31.
Second.
Roll call vote, Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm a I as well, the motion carries unanimously. All right, don't go anywhere, we got one more for you, Ashley. All right, next item on the agenda is...
Two more.
Don't drive away, I seen you in your car right there. Next item on the agenda is to consider the agreement with Minuteman Trucks Incorporated doing business as Allegiance Trucks Incorporated for a 2025 HV507 Snowfighter for the Department of Public Works. Just want to start out by saying it's a great name for a vehicle, I don't know who came up with that name, but the Snowfighter sounds pretty cool to me. So, Ash, you tell me about Snowfighter.
So that is one of our six-wheel trucks. It's the bigger trucks that you guys see on the road that plow. This one is actually a specialized one that has a sander that actually spreads from the center of the truck. It's used for doing hills and everything like that. It's one of our key vehicles for being able to keep Crow Point with all those hilly roads and everything like that safe for people to drive on in the winters.
Excellent. David, do you want to add anything?
No, nothing specific.
All right. Julie, any questions?
No, thank you.
Liz?
Just for David, a similar question. We've worked with Minuteman Trucks before, are they part of Plymouth?
They're not part of, it's not, they're not part of Plymouth, it is another one. It's Greater Boston Police Council.
Okay.
So it's a little bit different. I think they specialize also, Minuteman Trucks and Allegiance Trucks is a little bit more of a heftier vehicle, so this is a little bit different.
Okay, but you were happy with, obviously, their quotes and...
Yes, same thing, this is something that we've kind of had in the queue the last few weeks, and so I think the one that they sent to us is the one, it's been sound since, no changes or anything.
Okay, excellent, no other questions?
Great, thank you. Any members of the public cavity questions or comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, I take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the agreement with Minuteman Trucks, Inc., DBA Allegiance Trucks, Inc., for a 2025 HV507 Snowfighter for the Department of Public Works in an amount not to exceed $365,301.
Second.
Roll call vote, Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm a I as well, the motion carries unanimously. Ashley, thanks very much. David, always good to see... Oh, we have one more, okay, oh, we have one more.
Very efficient.
Yes, stay right there.
Hasn't even been a week.
Next item on the agenda is to consider the agreement with CN Wood Enviro LLC for an Elgin Pelican NP Dual Street Sweeper for the Department of Public Works. So Ashley, tell me about this vehicle.
So we currently have two street sweepers, and one is in constant need of repair, and is older, and so we've been really hoping to get the funding to be able to replace that vehicle. We'll be trading the old one in to replace with this, so then we can really stay on top of keeping the roads clean.
David, anything to add?
Nope, this is also a different procurement as well, it's through Sourcewell contract, but with CN Wood and a couple of vehicles passed, we have purchased a street sweeper for them before. And same thing, we put this through the end of the calendar year, December 31, 2025.
Excellent. Liz, any questions?
Do we know, or when do we expect to receive the vehicle?
These have kind of a long lead time, but the sooner that I can get it in, the sooner I can be on the list, and so I'm hoping to get it within this fiscal year.
Okay, great. And you mentioned that we're trading in the old truck, is there any trade-in value, any monetary value to that?
I won't know that amount until it comes time for us to do the trade-in.
Okay, okay, excellent, thank you.
Julie?
No questions, thanks.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments about this agenda item? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with CN Wood Enviro LLC for an Elgin Pelican NP Dual Street Sweeper for the Department of Public Works in an amount not to exceed
Second.
Roll call vote, Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm a I as well, the motion carries unanimously, and Ashley, thanks again, great seeing you. Thank you, David. Appreciate you helping, as always.
Great job, thank you. Thank you for all the work to make this happen.
Have a great night, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is appointments and/or reappointments. Do we have any appointments this evening?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Chrissy Roberts to the Taxation Aid Committee.
Your second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Julie?
Aye. Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries unanimously, and congratulations to Chrissy, and thank you for continuing to serve the town. All right, next item on the, on the agenda is public comment. Does any member of the public have any comment this evening on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'd move to Town Administrator Select Board Reports, and I must start with Art.
Yes, thank you, I just want to follow up on the Battle of Grape Island dedication earlier. I just want to remind folks that Hingham's first revolutionary weekend is part of the REV 250 effort here in town, is the weekend of May 17 and 18. And on Saturday, the 17th, the Hingham Historical Society will be hosting their Springham event from 3 to 6 p.m. And on Sunday, the Battle of Grape Island commemoration will take place at the Hingham Harbor Bandstand at 1 p.m. During that event, which will celebrate the 250th anniversary of that early skirmish in our revolution, the Hingham Militia, Wareham Militia, and the 64th Light Infantry will all be together to reenact this pivotal moment, and we hope folks will take time to participate. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Michelle.
Nothing this evening, thank you, and welcome, Julie.
Tom?
Yeah, I just wanted to welcome Julie to the board, I'm looking forward to serving with you. And also, I wanted to thank everyone in town for coming out to town meeting, we had over 700 people for two nights running, which was a great turnout, and, and it was a good series of debates, as always, respectful in Hingham, and it's always so fun to watch, and usually, you learn a lot when you go to those meetings. So, hopefully, attendance continues to increase, and looking forward to next year. But, and also, to thank you to all the staff who helped us with the, with the teller counting throughout the meeting, there were a number of standing votes that needed some, some assistance, so it was great to have everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Julie?
No report, thank you.
Liz?
I just want to say thank you to everyone that contributed to town meeting, certainly the staff, and the boards and committees, it's a ton of work all year long in advance of that meeting, and, and a special thank you to all of the citizens who participated. It was a great, lively debate. I think there's certainly a lot of takeaways for me, that will influence how I will govern